Okay, I'd like to call to order the April 16th, 2018, meeting of the Highland Park Board of Education. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of the public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the Highland Park Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting, sitting forth the time, date, and location to be submitted for publication to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger, and posted on the board's website at least 48 hours in advance of this meeting. Members of the public who wish to address the board will be given the opportunity to do so before the board adjourns for the evening. Linda, can we please have a roll call?
Ms. Byer? Ms. Simmarusti?
Here.
Ms. Coleman? Ms. Gowen? Mr. Krieger?
Here.
Mr. Magaziner?
Here.
Ms. McFadden, Dina Cola? Ms. Pietravono?
Here.
Mr. Roslevich?
Here.
Be it resolved pursuant to the Sunshine Act NJSA 10-4-12 and 13, the Highland Park Board of Education will now meet in closed session to discuss HIV reports, discipline, and personnel matters. These exemptions are permitted to be discussed in closed sessions in accordance with NJSA 10-4-13. Information regarding the board's closed-session discussion will be disclosed to the public as soon as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I please get a motion to convene to closed session?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. To introduce the curriculum meetings. She just sent an email. She won't be here, and one of her fellow committee members could they please present?
Okay, can I get a motion to reconvene to public session?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Could we please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Aye, pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for its stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, just as all.
Linda, do we have any communications other than what's on the agenda this evening?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. And, all right, so next on the agenda is the approval of minutes for the regular public and executive session from March 26th, 2018. Does anybody have any concerns or anything they noted for the, for those minutes? No, nothing? Okay. All right. Hello, students?
Hello.
How are you ladies this evening?
Okay. So, we start off with Irving. Read Across America was celebrated by having theme days, mystery readers, drop everything and read with parents, and everyone at Irving enjoyed a finale of our week-long celebration with a visit from the Cat in the Hat. Kindergarten and first grade teachers took part in reader workshop professional development, and intervention teachers are further delving into the use of the P-A-R assessment for early detection of dyslexia with Mrs. Pitapaldi this week. The Breakfast After the Bell program is servicing roughly 90 students each morning. This week, they will have the high school Red Cross Club coming into their, so actually that was last week, yes. Last week, they had the high school Red Cross Club come to Irving with their advisor, Ms. Young, and they presented the importance of handwashing with students through the Scrubby Bear program.
Stop it, the Scrubby Bear program?
Scrubby Bear program. And I know that a lot of high schoolers went and they enjoyed the trip.
That's seriously cute.
Can you hardly bear it?
She's finally found her audience.
All right, that was like, I've been awaiting like months to make a pun at one of these meetings. Okay. Lastly, on April 17th, the first grade classes will be going to the State Theater to see a showing of The Rainbow Fish, which is thanks to the generous PTO.
Okay, as for the high school, the Rutgers Model Congress team just came back from their conference this weekend. The team did exceedingly well, earning 17 individual awards, which is more than last year, and we only won nine last year. The club is now gearing up for our home conference, Siege Monk, which will be held, take place on May 19th, and we will bring more updates with that as it comes closer. DECA will be attending Nationals in Atlanta, Georgia next week. The club will be taking 32 of their members who have qualified in manuals, virtual business, and role-play, and we wish them all the best of luck. The Global Citizenship Program will be presenting their final projects at the Teach the World Forum at Rutgers University this Saturday from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Seniors participating will be presenting projects including music education, treatment of veterans, recycling, the opioid epidemic, and nationalism in sports culture. And finally, Student Congress will also be starting their annual food drive next week during homerooms, and the food will be donated to Middlesex County Food Pantry.
Great. Thank you very much, ladies. Anybody have anything for students today?
Nope.
Okay, so we'll move on to Dr. Taylor's report then.
So this is the time of year I ask our Director Supervisor of Ed Services to come talk about the state of educational services. That includes special education, ESL, working with our homeless population, et cetera. So Susie Budide, our Director of Educational Services, and wave for the audience on camera, Supervisor of Ed Services, Didi Dechers here. Thank you. It's all yours.
Okay, thank you. Did everybody get a handout?
They're about to.
Much easier to follow along?
They're about to.
So you don't have to turn around in your chair and look the other directions?
Hey. I don't think we have enough cards.
It's okay.
He's handing out cards. It's for, I haven't seen, should be, I think it's good.
Students, come here.
Do we have two more? Or is it one more?
There should be 11.
We're down this way. We have, they're coming. Sorry.
Very good. So, thank you again for having me. Every year, we get together about this time, and it's always nice to get together and discuss ed services. So, we'll first start with our first slide that talks a little bit about our numbers. So, there's a lot of numbers here to process and a lot of information, so we're not going to go over like every little thing, but basically what this particular chart shows you is the number of classified students that we have in district, the number who are out of district. It speaks to the referral process, our students who receive related services, including behavioral services, and the number of students that we have in our ELL program. It's separated out by school with the numbers from last year compared to the numbers this year. So, there are some important things to note. You'll see that the far-right column is all in red, so when I code this, I highlight things in red that are increases from last year, and I highlight things in green that are either the same or lower than last year. So you can tell right off the bat that in all areas this year, we've seen an increase in all of these different sections across the district. So we have seen a rise in our number of classified students both in and out of district this year. If you look at the numbers, you'll see that there's a significant reflection at Irving School. We've seen a lot of students coming up through early intervention who've been classified. That's really given a pretty significant rise to our numbers at Irving. And a lot of those students do need a number of related services, which is thereby driving up our numbers in related services as well, so you'll see that rise as well. We have seen some increases in our ELL department across the district, and you can see those numbers in each of the different schools. Moving on to the next slide, this slide talks about our staff in each of the buildings. So you can see in each of the buildings how many special education teachers we have, how many one-to-one paraprofessionals we have, how many shared paraprofessionals we have. So noting that we have eight teachers at Irving, Bartle, the middle school, and nine teachers at the high school, we have, oh my goodness, this is so tiny, we have four one-to-one paraprofessionals at Irving, three at Bartle, four at the middle school, and two at the high school. And then for our shared paraprofessionals, we have 11 at Irving, five at Bartle, five at the middle school, and, I'm sorry, five at the high school, two of which are paraprofessionals and three of which are job coaches. They all kind of fit in that same category. Then you can also see our occupational therapists, physical therapists, speech therapists, behavior specialists, child study team, and ELL. So what you will note is, from the first slide, we talked about the increase in related services due to the increased need at Irving, so we have needed to contract out some additional related services this year. Currently, our physical therapists and our behaviorists are maxed out, they're at full capacity. We did need to bring in some contracted occupational therapy and speech therapists to help meet the needs that we've seen in the different schools, primarily in Irving. Child study team is the same except for one addition, which we'll talk about in a later slide, and our ELL staff are the same as well. We have four full-time and one part-time ELL teacher. Moving on to your next slide, this takes a look at our program by building. This breaks down the number of self-contained resource room, in-class resource, and paraprofessional-supported classrooms, building to building. It also breaks down supplemental instruction at the high school. This is largely the same as last year with a few minor increases or reductions here or there depending on the needs of the student, but where you will see a rise this year as opposed to last year are the increased number of classes, especially in the area of ABA at Irving. And that's something that the board has been working on consistently with us and something that we'll talk about again in a later slide. The next slide takes a look at referrals. So this is something that we've not looked at in the past, but we felt was important to take a look at this year because we are seeing quite a rise in the number of referrals that we're receiving this year, and we did see a rise last year, and we're seeing even more of a rise this year. So you can see that so far this year, we've had 104 referrals for evaluation, for potential classification. Thirty-seven of those were made by parents, 33 were from transfer-ins, either that we had students who transferred in that were already in the process, or students who transferred in and required evaluation while they were here. Eleven came through early intervention, and 23 referrals were made by the school. So in looking at those referrals, 13 of the students were not found appropriate for evaluation, four students their parents withdrew the referral, zero had parents who did not consent, five students were found not eligible, 50 students were found eligible, and we still have 32 students who are in the process of evaluation, and eligibility has not yet been determined. I thought that it was important to take a look at this globally because we want to be sure that we understand what we're looking at this year as opposed to previous years with our referrals. So we took a look at the previous five years prior to this year to get some average numbers so that we understood in our trajectory kind of what we were looking at. So in looking at our average referrals over the last five years, our average referrals per year were around 86. So you can see that we're already at 104. We did have 110 last year, however, with the trajectory that we are on, we are on path to exceed that by the end of the school year. So if we come in around 114 referrals, which is kind of where I think we'll land if everything continues as is, we'll have the highest number of referrals this year that we've had in the last six years, so I think it's important to note that. Also, just looking at the different forms referrals, parent referrals are in about the average range. We get an average number of, over the years, like how many parent referrals we get, and we're in that average range. There's been an increase in transfer-ins, and it's a pretty significant increase. We've received on average 22 transfer-ins per year. As you can see, we're already at 33, and the school year is not over. So we do have a lot of students that are moving into district that are coming with referrals and with a need for services. The school-based referrals are in the average range, we're pretty much the same place that we've been over the last five to six years. Early intervention referrals have gone up. Average early intervention referrals is around seven students, we're already at 11 and counting. So this is one of those things that, because we have students who are coming through early intervention, we don't know what's coming because it's based on the student's third birthday, unlike other things that start in September at the beginning of the school year and so on and so forth, we don't always know what students who are two years old going to turn three are coming through early intervention. Susie? I'm sorry. For anybody who's watching or anybody on the board who might know, could you just explain a little bit more about early intervention and who does that and how that happens? Sure. So students birth to age three who'd need some form of special service, early intervention handles that. So they will evaluate the children at birth, whenever the issues start to arise. So that could be identified through a pediatrician, it might be identified through preschool or something like that. Students are then referred to early intervention, they're evaluated, and they're found eligible for services if necessary. We are not responsible for those students until the age of three, we're responsible age three through 21. So what happens is, 120 days, 120 days before the student turns three years old, if early intervention believes that the student is still going to need special services upon turning three years old, they will refer the child to our district, if they live in town, they'll refer them to us, and we have 120 days to evaluate the child to determine whether or not they're eligible for special education and related services. If they are, we then pick the children up at the age of three, and we start their educational programming at that time. If they're not, then we don't pick them up until the age of five unless their parents, you know, enroll them in our preschool program, but they wouldn't start with us then until the age of five. Okay? All right. And we, if we look at the number, this year, if we look at the number of children that we have classified compared to the number of children that were referred overall, we classify about 69% of children that are referred. So one of the things that's important to note about that is that our child study team really is doing their job. They're looking very, very closely at every case that comes across the table to determine whether or not they truly are appropriate for evaluation, and if they are, then they do the evaluative process. But it's not a blanket, once you're referred, you're automatically classified and receiving services. So our team really is doing their job to go through all of the processes, all of the steps that the code requires, and looking at this process very carefully while we're considering potential classification. Moving on to the next slide, one of the things that we started doing when I came to meet with you last year was taking a little bit of time to pick out one aspect of what we do and kind of elaborating a little bit on the process. So last year, we talked about out-of-district placement, how we come to the decision to seek an out-of-district placement for a child and what that means. So this year, the process that we're going to focus on is extended school year. So first, let's talk a little bit about how we determine whether or not a child is appropriate for an extended school year program. So first, let me point out that the only way a child is eligible for an ESY program is if they're classified. A general education student for our purposes, we run other summer programs, but an extended school year program through the Special Education Department is only for students who are classified. So the first thing that we have to do is, we have to take a look at regression and recuperation of information. So what we're taking a look at is, when the child has a break from school, for example, the December break or the spring break, and they have an extended period of time away from school, how much do they lose of the information that they've learned while they're gone? And when they come back, how long does it take them to recuperate that information to get back to where they left off and continue on? So for some of our students, they really don't have an issue with that. They can take a break, they come back, they do a little review, they're good to go, and they keep moving. We have other students, however, that when they take a break like that, because they're not actively receiving the education, they lose that information, it's very hard for them to recuperate it, and they lose educational time when they come back to school. So what your teachers do, or your therapists, because it can be related to therapies as well, will, they'll gather data before the students leave for the break, and then they gather data again when the students come back. What have they not retained? How long does it take them to regain that information? If we have a child that has regression and recuperation issues, that's a child that's appropriate for extended school year. So it could be academic, it could be related services, it could be behavioral or therapeutic in nature. So we look at all of those different aspects depending on what programming the child is receiving. And if you have a child that meets those requirements, then we would find them eligible for an ESY program. So that is a decision that's made by the child study team in a child study team, in an IEP meeting with the child study team, which the parent is a part of. We look at all of the data, we look at all the information, and then we make the decision about eligibility for ESY. Moving on to the next slide. So what does ESY do? So this is something that is not always well-known to parents and something that they always ask. Well, what does ESY do? Is my child going to increase the reading level while they're in ESY? Are they going to increase the math level? So we talk a lot about this because ESY is not intended to increase your levels. ESY is intended to keep you where you were. So when we talk about extended school year, we explain to parents, this is an extension of the previous school year. So what ESY does is it spends some time reviewing the information that the child has learned in the previous school year so that they don't lose it while they're out of school, so that the time span between when they leave us and when they come back in September is shorter, and they've had ample time to review the information so that it's hopefully going to stick a little bit better, so in September, when they start back up, they need less review, and they're ready to pick up and continue progressing as quickly as possible in September. So that's really the purpose of ESY. As I stated, this may also be for therapeutic or related services. We may have a child who receives speech services, and they need to continue some of that speech work over the summer. We may have a child who receives behavioral services through a behavior plan, and continuing that behavior plan over the summer helps with our students not regressing on those services. Any questions yet? Good? Okay. All right, moving on. So what's new this year? So these are some things that we've talked about already, so there should be no surprises in this particular section, but one of the things we looked at last year was that we had some students that had some therapeutic needs at Irving and Bartle, and we wanted to look at how best to provide them with some additional supports. Irving and Bartle don't have access to the teen center, so this is one of the therapeutic components that we really felt needed to be addressed. So this year, we hired a school psychologist, who we affectionately term our mental health specialist, and she has a lighter caseload than the rest of the child study team, and so she spends her time focused on direct services to the students as well as supports to the parents to help our students be more successful in school and have a more positive experience in school. So she started this year, and things are going great, and her students and families are doing well, and we've been very pleased so far, and we're looking forward to continuing on with her for the rest of the year and moving forward into next year.
Susie, can you elaborate on what, if any, services she's provided after hours? Because we talked about the wraparound services she provided.
Yes. So what this particular staff member does is, sometimes we'll have students who, having some supports at home and carrying over some of what we do at school to the home can be very beneficial to helping the student be more successful in school. So she may meet with parents and give them suggestions or put plans together that now gives a more comprehensive set of supports for the students so that they can be more successful in school. In addition, there may be some outside resources that could be beneficial to the family, so she will connect the family with those outside resources so that they have access to that and just to make that process a little bit easier. It can be very involved, and there's a lot that goes on with that, and she works with the parents to help them walk through that process just to alleviate some of that stress to getting to the, I mean, we all know the red tape gig, right? So she kind of helps them walk through that process a little bit better. In school, she does a lot of direct services, a lot of therapeutic pieces with the students that previously we weren't able to do, but bringing her on board really allows us to be able to do that. Okay? Does that answer that question?
[inaudible]
Okay, moving on to the next slide. As you know, this year, we brought on a full-time supervisor of educational services and teacher, which has been a huge plus this year. So one of the things that we really noted that we felt we needed was a more comprehensive administrative-level support system for the ed services department as a whole. And so the decision was made to bring on a full-time supervisor position, and it's really given us the capability to go much deeper into some of our needs and to spread further than we previously were able to, which has been nice. So she does many, 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 many things, but just as a general overview, she really handles the day-to-day things that pop up with the child study team, with teachers, maybe with administrators, that frees me up a little bit to handle some higher-level issues. So she kind of handles those day-to-day issues that pop up. She also has picked up observations, which I know all of the administrators are thrilled for because it really helps us to, you know, be able to lighten that load and even that out a little bit. She's also an ongoing support for teachers, to support them with servicing their children who are classified. There are lots of questions that pop up, and she's really there to get in there, to get in the classroom, to meet with the teachers, talk to the teachers, and give them what they need. She functions as our homeless liaison and our educational stability specialist. I will say that of everything that she does, and she does many, 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 many things, she has done a tremendous, tremendous job of supporting our homeless families and our children who are living in foster homes and different things like that. She really has made that a priority and has been a tremendous support to those families, so I'm very, very grateful for that. She assists with program research and development, we've done a lot of that, and so she's knee-deep in all of that, and she supports me and helps me with that. And then there are a lot of things that come up that we ask her to do to support both me and other administrators in the district. So we're very, very thrilled and grateful to have those additional supports in place so that we can be more thorough and effective with the work that we do.
Susie, can you provide an example of one of those day-to-day, in the classroom kinds of things that Didi does?
So there are lots of times where we'll have children that hit a stumbling block, and the teachers kind of try everything, and they just aren't sure what to do next. So one of the things that they can do is, they can come to Didi and they can say, "Look, I've tried this, I've tried that, I don't know what to do about this, I don't know what to do about that, I can't get in touch with the parent, I can't motivate the child, we need some help in figuring out how to support the student in studying for tests." I mean, the list goes on and on and on and on. "How do I modify this? Because this modification isn't working, so what's another modification that we can try?" So the nice thing is that Didi kind of has hands that reach everywhere, so if she can't answer those questions, she can reach out to the resources that we have internally to get answers for teachers much quicker than, say, a case manager who's got three IEP meetings and four evaluations and, you know, those kinds of things. So it really gives her that ready access capability to help the teachers with whatever question might come up.
There's one more question about Didi, I'm sorry. And you might need to shout this out. Can you tell us off the top of your head how many homeless cases you think you're dealing with right now?
I don't, yeah.
Wow, okay.
Okay. No, I'm sorry. For those who didn't hear, she said 16 families. We're currently servicing 16 families. Okay?
[inaudible]
Yes, yeah. We rise and fall, and rise and fall. Okay, where did I read off? Up there, full-time supervisor. Okay, so next, let's talk a little bit about meeting the needs of our students this year. So different things always present themselves every year, and so we try to adjust ourselves to meet those particular needs. So one of the things that I talked about was that rise in numbers at the Irving School of the students who are coming through early intervention and need different kinds of programming. So we've had more students this year than we have in the past who have needed very specific targeted intervention, and by example, I would bring the Applied Behavior Analysis or the ABA framework. So we've had a lot of students who require that particular framework of services, and that is a very, very specific and targeted, highly individualized program that can meet individual needs of the students. So we did already have a pre-K ABA and a K2 ABA classroom at the school, but over the years, over the year, not the years, over the year, with the different referrals that have come in through early intervention as well as some transfer-ins and some additional referrals in the K2 window, we reached a point where those two classes were not enough to hold the number of students that we were servicing. So this year, we did open two additional ABA classrooms, one at the pre-K level and one at the K2 level. So we now have four ABA classrooms functioning at the Irving School. We were fortunate in that we thought that we were going to have to hire some new staff. We had some changes in needs and some scheduling adjustments that allowed us to use an on-staff teacher to staff the first class that opened, the second class that opened, we had a part-time teacher that with a little bit of adjustment, and moving her to a full-time position rather than a part-time position, we were able to use her as well. So although we did have to hire some additional staff in the realm of paraprofessionals, we were lucky in that we did not have to bring on two full-blown new teachers this year, so we were thrilled to be able to do that. As I did mention previously, opening these classes did increase significantly some of the related services that we've needed to provide, so we've done what we needed to do to put in place those services for those students. We've also had other transfer-ins or classifications across the district that have also required some related services, so we've used the resources that I previously mentioned to meet those particular needs. One of the great things is that we have another district that has a need for an ABA classroom for their student. We talked with them about our programming, they did an intake, and we will be receiving our first tuition student for our ABA classroom. So we're bringing on a new friend to that class in the very near future, so we're thrilled to have that student joining us and joining that class. The other thing was, just give me one second, I'm sorry. This, I've already discussed all this. So the last thing was that we had originally anticipated having to open a second section of our high school glow classroom. We had quite a number of students in that class, and by code, we were going to need to split that class because we had too many students. We did have a change in the enrollment in that particular classroom, and it ended up this year that we did not have to hire that second to have that student joining us and joining that class. The other thing was, just give me one second, I'm sorry. This, I've already discussed all this. So the last thing was that we had originally anticipated having to open a second section of our High School Glow classroom. We had quite a number of students in that class, and by code, we were going to need to split that class because we had too many students. We did have a change in the enrollment in that particular classroom, and it ended up this year that we did not have to hire that second teacher, and we did not have to open a second classroom. So that was nice, because we were able to use our existing staff to meet the needs of that particular classroom. So we didn't have to hire someone that we were anticipating having to hire. So that's my presentation. Questions?
Well, based on, so, thank you. Really fantastic, and we love having you guys in and bringing us up to speed. So with regard to growth, the growth of this population, the growth of, the numbers seem to be going up each year.
Yes.
Is that a forever thing? I mean, in your estimation, are you seeing that this is a trend that is going to be continuing, you know, down the road for the next three, four, five years? And obviously, clearly, the concern being that if we have this number, particularly in the lower grades, is that number continuing through the years at Bartle and then the middle school? And I'm just seeing a kind of a potentially ballooning enrollment of those kids? And to that end, I guess I was going to ask, do you have a larger snapshot of the, basically your first slide? Do you have a wider history beyond the last year versus this year? Do you have, say, a three or five-year...
Um, for, not for the referrals, for the very first slide.
The very first slide.
So I, from, while I was here, I have this year, last year, and the year before. So I have a three-year window. On this particular chart, I only include the previous year, but I do have this same presentation from the previous year that I can give you, if you'd like to take a look. What I can say as far as the projected enrollment, what that's going to look like moving forward, so, of course, nobody knows for sure, obviously, and it's not unusual to see this rise and fall in special education, where you'll see a couple of years of this rise, and then you'll see a drop-off, and then a rise, and then a drop-off. So that's not unusual, and I wouldn't necessarily expect that to be any different for us. However, I will say that across the state, all districts are seeing this rise in early intervention referrals. So it's not just us, it's consistent, when I go to my county meetings, like, we all talk about this, this, you know, really huge rise in early intervention referrals compared to previous years. So where that will land, I'm not sure. What I do know is that it's not exclusive to Highland Park, that it is something that we are seeing, you know, pretty much across the state.
That part of it is definitely seeming to be a trend. And clearly, we, both in the Finance and Facilities Committee, but also across the board, need to be prepared staffing-wise.
Yes. And those students, you're right, those students who are babies now will be our high-schoolers down the road. So yes, that's a legitimate thing to bring to the table and say, "We need to plan ahead. We need to be prepared. If this is where we are now, how do we plan long-term for students who may require services like this longer than preschool, kindergarten, first grade, that kind of thing?" So it's definitely on our minds. We've already looked at this two, three years ahead, and what we think we're going to need to plan out over the next couple of years. At the moment, for next year, there's not much change that we anticipate. However, the following year, we are going to have a group of these students that are going to move up to Bartle, and depending on what their needs are in that particular year, do they look like they look now? I mean, a lot can happen in a year, so their particular needs may change between now and then, but if they continue to need programming like an ABA program, we will need to take a look at that, and how do we provide what they need as they move from school to school? So it's already on our mind.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Question?
Yes.
Thank you for your report, and I guess congratulations, I think, are in order for this first tuition student for the ABA class. I think that's awesome, because it's a testament to the program, I would say. I have a question about, I guess this is on our page three, the slide that says a look at our referrals so far. I'm just wondering, for the students who are not tested, what's the process for determining...
Let's take us back to that slide. This one, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So when you're looking at a child who has been referred for a potential evaluation, one of the first things that the child study team needs to do is they need to take a look at educational impact. So even if a child has a particular disability, or they have some kind of difficulty, if it's not impacting their education and their ability to receive their education and to be socially and emotionally healthy and well-rounded in school, it doesn't qualify for special education-related services. So the first thing that you really need to look at is whether or not we see an impact right out of the gate. So typically, we'll look at things like, what do the student's grades look like right now? What kinds of supports are already being provided to help the student function at the level that they're functioning? Do they have a friend base? Are they having difficulty getting along with their teachers? Are they having any kind of behavioral difficulties or mental health issues? So you're really going to look at kind of this whole picture of the student and look at how it's impacting the student in school. If there is no impact at that point, then it doesn't warrant evaluations. If we have a student who is a straight A student, has a great group of friends, gets along great with their teachers, that's a student that might present a profile that potentially might not be appropriate for evaluation, because we're not seeing an educational impact. By the same token, we might have a student who is receiving good grades, but they may be having some mental health issues or different things like that, that we might say, "Look, we need to take a look a little bit deeper." Or we might have a student that despite whatever supports the teachers are giving, they're not able to keep their grades up, they're having a lot of difficulty with homework, and that's another child that might potentially have a profile that we might take a look and do a little more, you know, do some testing and do a little more looking at what's going on, to make sure that we don't have a student with a disability that's impacting their educational component. So that's really where they start. Are we seeing an educational impact? We might not know what the educational impact is, but are we seeing an educational impact? If we see an educational impact, then we're going to evaluate and take a look at what's going on.
Perfect. Thank you.
My pleasure. This man.
An educational impact would certainly include, like, significant behavioral challenges, right?
Yes.
Okay. Even if the grades were fine?
Yes.
Okay, just, thank you.
Yes.
Anybody else have any questions for Susie?
I just wanted to comment, the early intervention, that's done by the local hospital, correct? The early intervention for the...
I should probably know the answer to that question, but I'm not sure I do. I don't, do you, is it done to the hospital? Yeah, that's what I thought, too, it's to the county.
It's the county, okay. I had thought in a previous meeting, we discussed the, like, the local hospital giving us the report.
The services are done by the county, early intervention, so then you can provide them with...
I see.
Right.
Right. When you're involved by getting the ABA, the planning plan, it's possible from IP, but it's called...
Yeah, I see, right.
I see.
So they make contracts with them, but it doesn't originate, it doesn't originate at the hospital.
So it originates at the county level?
I'm sorry?
It originates at the county level, then?
Yes, yes.
Okay. I guess I just wanted to make clear that it's not the district that's doing the early intervention, which could have been, could have thought that to be the case.
Gotcha. So one of the things about early intervention is that it's completely confidential. So unless early intervention believes 120 days before the child's third birthday, that they may potentially be eligible, we are completely separate from that entity, and that information is confidential from us. So not until that 120-day window, at the discretion of early intervention through their own evaluations and so on and so forth, do we even know about those children, which is why it's difficult to know kind of what's coming, because we're, that's confidential from us, because it's a separate entity from us.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Nope? Okay. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. See you tomorrow. That concludes my report.
All right. Thank you very much. So we'll move on to our committee reports. Michelle is not here tonight to give the curriculum report. Monique, can you give us, like, a synopsis of the curriculum agenda? It's a very short one.
The agenda is short, but the discussion was not.
See, it's always a balance.
Let me attempt to highlight, or describe the highlights from the meeting. First up was Dr. Christina Nikozia, our Supervisor of Math and Sciences, who gave a curriculum spotlight on the math programs in the middle school particularly, focusing on the plan for redesign of the middle school math. And Doc, uh, sorry, I lost my place here. Dr. Nikozia shared some of the research that she's been doing on best practices in this area, so that her and her team can really, you know, plan for proper design of rollout of the math redesign. One of the books that she shared is Detracking for Excellence and Equity, and she cited some of the resources she's shown with successful school districts, such as Rockville Center District, which has best practices in place for dismantling math ability grouping district-wide. Dr. Nikozia shared some of those best practices with us, and she also put forth a plan for the Highland Park Middle School Math for 2018-19. And I can just run through some of the bullets here and the plan for what the math redesign here. First, starting with community conversations with the data and the large body of research supporting, eliminating ability grouping and detracking, then looking at, in 1920 to, 1919 to 2020, 2019 to 2020, math 6A accelerated for all students, with support classes every day, and this would not include for students with severe cognitive impairments. A third point in the plan would be professional development in the area of differentiation for teachers, teaching, and also teaching teachers to have a deeper math understanding, communicating to the school community that math is for everybody, so just creating that understanding that all students have an ability to and can learn math, and not necessarily a math brain, that some have and others don't. And lastly, we talked, she talked about the curriculum revision process also needing to address financial literacy at all levels for our students. So that would include daily practical math and accessible math. We moved on next to discussing the Amistad Act, which, in a nutshell, is an act that became public law in 2002 in New Jersey schools, and the purpose of this act is to incorporate African-American history into the local social studies curriculum in all school districts across New Jersey. And it ensures that the history of African-Americans and their significant contribution to the development of this country is infused in history, not just during Black History Month. So we discussed, you know, the whole Amistad Act and how so many districts are out of compliance with that act, some of the districts may not even be aware of it, but it has been New Jersey law since 2002. So our Supervisor of Humanities, Rebecca Fiddy-Paldi, I thought I pronounced that correctly, has done an assessment of our current curriculum regarding the Amistad Act compliance, and she shared her findings in that area, very thorough assessment. She discovered that the Amistad Act is not currently embedded in the formal curriculum, so we're out of compliance there. She will be working on addressing that clearly. And the history of Highland Park is another area that she looked into, that's not currently embedded in the formal curriculum. In terms of slavery, the three classes that do focus on that are World History, US History I and US History II. And then we also talked about genocide curriculum, including the Holocaust and Native American population, ensuring those are also included in the curriculum. So the initial plans to update the curriculum based on these areas, one of the initial plans is to create an elective at the middle school called Facing History and Ourselves, so very interesting plan here, and that would be to have this course being offered to both seventh and eighth graders for semester in 2018-19, and then rolling it out more extensively for seventh and, I'm sorry, offered in the seventh grade for 2018 to 2019, and then in 2019 to 2020, moving to seventh and eighth graders, making it available for both grade levels. But the course will integrate history, literature, and social decision-making, so students can promote historical understanding, critical thinking, and social-emotional learning. And the idea is also to include Highland Park history in that course content. So we had very lengthy and invigorating discussion about the history of, again, our local history, and how a lot of what the kids are learning about in terms of the national historical narrative on race relations, civil rights, played out on a local level here, and it would be helpful for our students to learn that. We also talked about offering PED support, to support literacy instruction at the primary grades, in terms of incorporating the Amistad Act there. Another suggestion that arose was to offer a teacher-staff book study on White with the Right Rage book by Carol Anderson, and incorporating that to some of the PED. And lastly, graduate course offerings for teachers and administrators for the 2018-2019 school year was discussed, including teaching the Holocaust and teaching prejudice reduction, both being offered at Keene University. Then we moved on to early childhood learning study group meeting, which will be coming up on, which passed April 11th.
Actually, I can give you a update on the date. Give me one second. We just scheduled it. I also want to...
It didn't happen on the 11th?
No.
It didn't? Okay.
It's going to be May 2nd.
Okay, perfect. So May 2nd. They will meet to discuss a return of play in the classrooms at Irving. The study group will basically look at creating a play-based early childhood curriculum, as well as an inclusive concept of best practices in the early grades. Lastly, we talked about Forest Fridays, which is an idea in that realm, and which is an idea to pilot pre-K to first-grade Irving students out to the meadows on Fridays.
I may have to have more children.
Well, if you want to go that far. So, yes, so really exciting stuff there.
Well, on second thought.
And that is it, in a nutshell, the whole, all of the notes, which, there are a lot more that I didn't cover in depth, but are available in the agenda.
Mark appreciates that.
Just one addition I want to make, I'm sorry, after the curriculum committee meeting, I met Ms. Fiddy-Paldi. So our five-year curriculum revision cycle doesn't have us look at the social studies curriculum, K-12 until 2019-2020, as you pointed out. But what we would like to do, because we feel it really is important not to let another year go by without a focus on genocide, education, and Amistad, compliance needs, we're going to create packets, we're going to have the teachers help create packets. I might be coming to the board for the request for some compensation for these teachers over the summer to supplement the K-12 curriculum, for next year at least.
It used to be such a, like, particularly the genocide curriculum, it used to be a vital part of the curriculum, I think in, like, the fifth grade, maybe, is when it was, and it just made, right?
Usually, it starts in fourth grade, and because that's when they start getting into some US history, and it ties into World War II, and then fifth grade. But it's not, I mean, in some cases at the high school, of course, it's offered woven into the curriculum.
And I remember doing it in fourth grade, I'm not sure if Julia does.
I have no recollection. But that doesn't mean it didn't happen.
I remember, we didn't do, we did the Holocaust, but we didn't really do an overview of genocide, and then I, we did some of it in World History, but there wasn't much genocide.
We did some Holocaust stuff in eighth-grade English when we read Night by Elie Wiesel.
Oh, that's true.
I remember that.
We had a debate, yeah.
Sometimes those discussions are accompanied, I don't remember how in-depth we went with slavery, but we definitely talked about it at least briefly when we read, you know, Frederick Douglass in ninth grade. So there's, sometimes it's accompanied with, in the English classrooms, but that's also not the most extensive discussion of those subjects.
Yeah, and slavery was also mentioned in US I as well.
Yeah, extensively in US I.
But no, genocide has been, I, I mean, as a social studies student, I would have liked to see it learned more about in the curriculum from the past 12 years, but yeah.
Ms. Fiddy-Paldi's concern with the lack of a vertical articulation, not only issues around civil rights, genocide education, Amistad-related material, I mean, but in a lot of other areas, we don't, as was the case with the health curriculum. So she would like to, wants these supplements to be a precursor to the curriculum that will vertically align how we introduce these topics, so we can scaffold them, so you don't have to just have it in fourth grade, have it in eighth grade. Go ahead.
In eighth grade, we actually did, we did a...
An extensive unit.
We did a pretty large unit about genocide, and we went to a conference, I think, or some kind of, like, workshop day.
It was in a, so, Company Diversity Day in eighth grade, it was actually, it was a really, really impressive kind of thing that Mr. Melanick and whoever else was helping run it at the time set up, studying this in global issues, and then it got incorporated into Diversity Day, and we watched a film about the Rwandan genocide, and then we attended a conference, the entire eighth grade, attended a conference where the general, the Canadian general who was in charge of the peacekeepers in Rwanda spoke, in addition to other people. And actually, my friend and I were talking about it two weeks ago, about how it was something, it was a lot for eighth graders to go do, but everybody handled it exceptionally well, kind of. of, and how cool that exposure was.
Yeah, we had, it was a day of, like, the keynote speaker, and then we all went to work, different workshops about other, we went to the one about Rwanda together, and then we went to different workshops about other genocides, like the Armenian genocide, more about Rwanda and some about the Holocaust as well. So it was incredibly interesting.
That's intense. That would be an intense day for an adult.
Yeah.
All right, awesome. Do you mind running real quickly just through the few items on the agenda, too?
Okay.
Pretty straightforward.
There we go. Resolution to approve field trip requests as per the attached. Resolution to approve the HIB incident report for the month of February 2018. Do I have to list all of them? Okay. Resolution to approve the following graduate student placements. Perfect.
Okay, all right, that's it. Thank you so much.
Is it possible for me to just point out that one of the field trip requests is for the GLOW program to go to New York City? And if you look at how it's funded, it was funded by a student congress grant. Liv and I are, you know, because we're part of the board, we have to sit in on student congress meetings, and I just think that this is like such a perfect example of Highland Park having a student-run organization that raised money from homecoming and from various other things. And we had representatives from the different class officers and different clubs come in and present, and then we all voted to give this money to the GLOW program.
Awesome.
And I just, I don't, it made me really happy to see it.
That's great.
I just thought, two-day moment of Highland Park student action.
That's fabulous. Thank you for pointing that out. Okay, if, nobody has any questions for Monique? Anybody have any questions for Monique or Scott on curriculum stuff? Nope, nobody? All right, thank you very much, Monique.
You're welcome.
So Mark, want to go through the finance and facilities items with us?
Yes, so first, we, the finance committee met this evening before the board meeting. We received the report on the air quality in the middle school gym, and we passed, in fact, we better than passed, we were well under the maximum recommended amounts in the air.
But there's a but.
The, of mercury. The person, the company that did the report told us to check again in the summer. So we'll be doing more than one set of testing, but for now, the gym is safe, according to the reports. The food service, food service company, Pomtonian, notified us that all romaine lettuce is off the-
It's been a tough year for romaine.
It's been a really tough year for romaine.
It's been pulled because there's a recall.
So we also, this wasn't on the initial agenda, but we are going to, we're going through the first steps towards an application for money for a five-year loan from the county, I think it is, for security equipment. So this would include cameras and upgraded vestibules and so on. And so the district will be moving forward on, again, the first steps towards that, and then hopefully doing a five-year security program to the tune of, à la $40,000 a year, so that we don't have to buy this all at once, a total of $200,000. The student enrollment is up by seven students from last month, but down by 23 students from a year ago. So while we're seeing it's starting to come slightly up again to get close to last year's numbers, we're definitely continue to be lower than last year, which is a good thing and a bad thing. Can't grow too much, we would outgrow the facility. And then we reviewed the current situation of the budgeted versus actual expenses for this current year, because we need to move money from this year to next year, and we're very close to target of the $1 million that we budgeted to bring into next year's budget, which is very, very good. And thanks to Linda and to Scott for being on top of this. It's really, really good that they're keeping such a close watch, and we're very close to the amounts that we need and may actually increase to slightly above those amounts. So that was our, oh, and we do have some budget meetings planned with the community. I didn't look right before the meeting, but I think I saw on my calendar PT, PTI this week on Wednesday?
Correct.
Right, so Wednesday at 7:00?
7:00 PM.
Right.
And that'll be at the Media Center in Barnum.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so for the finance and facilities list, item two are the bill lists. That'll, as usual, it will, we'll have more lists next time as those come forward, but these are the lists we have right now. There's a resolution to approve travel and related expense reimbursement reports. There's a resolution to approve the community forestry program, community stewardship incentive program.
That's a lot of community.
Woo! Grant proposal.
There's two communities in the title.
And that's, that's to plant, I believe, Scott, 150 trees? Do I have the number?
Up to 75.
75.
You've doubled it.
I doubled it.
If we choose to go there, if we choose to go there.
75 trees on different, on our campuses, all included, the trees and the planting. And that's, that's, will be done hopefully with grant money. There's a resolution number five to approve an out-of-district placement for one student to Rutgers Day School at a tuition rate of $62,830, prorated effective April 10. There's a resolution to approve travel of Darcy to the annual NJSBA delegate assembly in West Windsor in May. And then there's a resolution to approve board travel for Monique to the NJSBA new board membership, member orientation at Lawrence High School on May 12. And I, as I've said before, I'm always repeating this, it's wonderful to have a new member go to those orientations, it's very valuable. So, great that you're going. We have, we have three donations. We have a weight squat rack for the weight room valued at $1,000 from San Levy, a resolution to accept a donation of a French horn valued at $1,000 from Marcia Goldberg, and a resolution to accept a donation of $2,000 to the Community Teen Center, the youth services program from Yu-Hai One. So thank you to all three.
It's amazing, thank you very much.
It's really wonderful. It's really, really wonderful. There's a resolution to participate and coordinate transportation with the Educational Services Commission, 2018-19 school year. This is something we do every year. We coordinate our transportation with the Services Commission. There's a resolution to approve non-public school technology equipment purchase. That's also typical, that has to run through our board approval before the money gets released to a non-public school. And then item 13 is accepting grant funding increases of $35,000, $3,558.41. That's an increase, salary increases, and $4,000 to help facilitate the strengthening families curriculum for children and parents. And again, that's at the teen center. And then resolution to approve wireless access points for a total of $33,844.33. And this is being done so we can have E-rate rebates of up to 60% of the purchase price. And again, this is a standard, typical kind of a resolution for us to be able to use money from, or help in this case, from elsewhere, which requires board approval. And that's the report.
All right, great, thank you, Mark. Anyone have any questions for Mark? No? Okay, let's move on to Personnel and Communication, Communication Center, please, with Judy.
Okay. We did have our meeting last week, and not too much on the agenda, but that's what we started with first. So we had a resolution to approve a part-time special ed para, Nikita Ramreka at Irving, that is item number two. We also are looking to approve Michael Nastis as an after-school program assistant at Irving. Number four is retroactive pay for Thomas Clafani for 9th grade orientation at the high school. He was covering for a teacher that was not able to make it, so that's on the agenda. Our usual source for teachers list. Number six, we have a resignation of Alana Waltek, the middle school nurse, effective June 30. Then we have some curriculum writing hours for teachers, number seven, I guess that was for the health curriculum, I think. And number eight is a medical leave request for one of our staff members. So that was it for the agenda. The other things we discussed, a little update on the Irving media specialist position, the part-time position that we have not been able to fill yet, but on Sunday's Star Ledger, we had a big add for our various vacancies that we have. So that was listed there. And we also have a teacher in-house that's considering perhaps going to get her emergency certification, so we're waiting to see if that's going to work out, so that's another And we also, Scott Felderson, about a successful, what do you call it, he went to Montclair to look for some teachers, and we had a wonderful-looking table with our huge Highland Park banner, and Scott was working the crowd. So we, we have some potentially good candidates from that as well. And that was pretty much it, was a short meeting. You know, not usual.
It's not usual for you guys.
Yes, so we'll be gearing up soon as April, end of April hits.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any questions for Judy? No? Okay, Anne, policies.
Great, thank you. So as a reminder, every one of our policies, by which I mean our written, formal policies, comes before the board four times. So if anyone has concerns about the policies we're going to discuss tonight, which may be the case, there will be three additional opportunities to raise those, in addition to, of course, being able to email us. The first policy, I'll go over the, maybe what's the less controversial, though the more impactful one first. It's policy 8330 on student records. This is a policy we already have. It basically deals with the Board of Ed or the district maintaining certain student records as required by the State Board of Education, various administrative directives, and records permitted by this board. So maintenance of critical student records. Actually, it's kind of strange, it says, "The board authorizes the establishment and maintenance of student files that include only those records mandated by law, blah, 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 and those records permitted by the board." So that could be a little more specific, maybe. We permit, maintains all records that we permit to be maintained. Maybe we want to narrow that at some point. But for purposes of this particular amendment, after speaking with representatives from the ACLU, who I believe came to us with proposals from the New Jersey, is it the Coalition for Immigrant Justice? If I have the name right. They had some suggestions for ways we could maintain records that would protect the privacy of students who might not be documented, might not have appropriate, might not have the requisite documentation of their status in the United States, because we want all of our students to feel welcome in the school, to feel safe, not to feel like the school is going to be giving out information that could be dangerous to their families. So with that in mind, we are recommending, at our next meeting, two changes in the current policy. I'm having trouble finding one of them, excuse me.
I think it's just in three spots, right? Where all it does is take out the-
Yes.
All it does is take out the language, it says origin and-
Yes, that's correct.
Origin of birth.
And it's just taking out the origin and part, so.
That's correct. I, I'm sorry, I converted it to a different format, which immediately lost all my changes.
Awesome.
So, yes, we'll no longer be maintaining information in these records about where a student was born, because that can obviously have problematic consequences for some students. And that, I believe we changed that, as Darcy said, in three different places, including any kind of student directory that we might produce, or that might be produced by the buildings for use by other students.
So I think now, like, moving forward, we've taken all of that off of any of our registration documents, so we're not asking for that information, and then we also won't be, well, we can't maintain things we don't ask for, but-
Right.
Yeah, so we won't be asking for it or maintaining it.
And I assume, right, I assume that, like, after, if we decide to adopt these modifications, then, you know, we'll be going through our records and excising the information that is not supposed to be there, which is presumably there now, maybe? I actually don't know what we actually keep. But after this policy is passed, if it is passed, after these policy changes are passed, if they are passed, we'll certainly be checking to make sure that that stuff is not being maintained.
But we may have to put that in the policy. I don't think there's anything in there that said that we would go back and retroactively remove.
Good point. Well, we can't, yeah, right, I mean, don't maintain, I guess, implies, get it out of there. But you know what, maybe we should put a directive in there, let me make a note about that.
It's a protocol that we put in place to take that information out.
Yeah, but maybe we should include that, like, actually write that in the policy? I don't know, that-
Can we do it just moving forward? Is it incumbent upon us to go backwards in our records?
Yes.
It's-
Sorry, I'm sorry, I redrafted you, I apologize, but keep going.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if it's incumbent upon us to go backwards in our records, or just to make sure that if there's a request for a release of some records, we only release those that are, and that at that point destroy the portion that is, I don't want to-
But then you get into how secure is our data, and, you know, all these things, could somebody potentially, you know.
Right, I'm just wondering what the economic impact would be for us to have to go through all of our current, whatever our student records are. I don't know how long-
Well, I could tell you, I mean, I took an administrative action to take out the fields in Genesis, our student information system, that maintain the data that could expose or put an immigrant in harm's way. So for instance, there was a code for immigration status. Took it out.
Oh, even worse.
And that information automatically becomes null and void, so that we, when we have to send it to the state, it just does not move along with that information. So wait, take it, time, we just delimited the fields.
Oh, okay.
But we do, I mean, we do have a record for our own sake in the paper versions of the personnel files, some of this information, but none of it's being reported to the state.
Not personnel files, you didn't mean personnel files, did you?
Well, I'm sorry, we refer to them as personnel files, they're student files. Q and folders, Q and files, that's sometimes what they're referred to. Anne, do you also want to point out the Alliance template policy that we might look at?
Yes, that's right, we didn't put that on the agenda. They've also, can I go back to this for one second?
No, I'm sorry.
This policy first? It occurs to me, I mean, do we need to be more clear about sort of what records this is talking about? I mean, obviously, we have like a vast array of duplicated student records, you know, all around the buildings, right? I mean, we fill things out by hand every year, probably done it, you know, seven times now for each child.
It couldn't hurt to codify what we did, so that if we're not here one day, at least it's a matter of policy.
It's possible we should, yeah, I mean, I would like to, maybe when we come back for the voting meeting next week, I, and everybody else, of course, is welcome to take a look at this stuff, and email me, email whoever. It's possible we should clarify what records we're talking about, and that we'd like to have stuff not collected in other records as well, moving forward. Because, you know, we don't want staff to be in a position of, you know, being asked for information, having to say, let me comb through it for each request, to see if there's anything.
Would you feel comfortable waiting until second read, since that might take a little time?
Oh, sure, yeah. I mean, if we get to it before first read, that's fine, but if we don't, that's fine. Let me just make a note about that, different sets of records. Okay, yeah, and as Scott was pointing out, we, Scott has received from, I'm looking it up right now, from the New Jersey, New Jersey Alliance for Immigrant Justice, I'm sorry, I think I had the wrong entity. They've provided us with a model policy that they are recommending districts adopt. It's called Access to Education, Student Privacy, and Immigration Enforcement. We don't have that on the agenda this time, but it is something that we would like to discuss, and I suppose in our next round of policy creation and approval, we would want to include it. It talks about information collection, you know, avoiding collecting information, as this policy does, avoiding collecting information pertinent to immigration status that could be dangerous for some students. It goes through some things we already do, such as not requiring photo identification, government-issued photo ID to register, this number of other things, let's see. There's a, there's a section on access to school sites, when we will and when we will not invite federal agents to come on the premises. Obviously, if there's a court order, a judicial warrant requiring federal agents to come onto the premises, we can't do much about that, but it sort of sets out some limitations in other situations. And I will- And I will, let me circulate this to the board, and then we'll also put this through the formal policymaking process?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Which, you know, I wish I had done earlier, but, let's see. I mean, among the things that it requests is that, I can't find this part, if for some reason we have a legal obligation to give certain information to a federal agency, such as Immigration and Customs Enforcement, which is really what this is aimed at, we would want to give a certain amount of notice to the family affected, so that they would have time to prepare for any eventualities that that might create. So I'll circulate it to the board, everybody can give their input, and we'll put it through the policy process. But it's a, it's a policy I very much support, and I'm guessing that many of the rest of us do as well. Okay. Now, moving on from things that affect the core of people's existence, to the lice policy. We do not have, well, of course, this affects the core of our persons in some ways. I mean, I'm joking about it, but of course, we all know that lice is a huge pain. I certainly have experienced it with my children, and it was not fun, so no one means to make light of lice. However, sometimes it feels funny to be discussing it over and over again. Okay, policy 8454 is proposed by our Policy Advisory Service, Strauss Esme, for the management of pediculosis, which we are going to be recommending a change to, management of head lice, so people will understand what we're talking about. So Strauss Esme recommended a template. We got a bunch of input on it from various policy committee members and others, and we have, there's a version of the proposed policy in the public materials for tonight. I think that after a little bit more discussion, after that was put out there, we decided that there are a number of changes we'd like to recommend, either at first reading or second reading. I think some of them we could recommend for first reading next week. Let me just go through some of the really basic changes that I anticipate asking Susan to put in there for your consideration. So let's see, let me go back to the policy. I'm sorry, my computer's a little slow, and so am I. All right, so I'm looking at the version of the policy that was provided to the public tonight. I'm going to recommend that when we actually look at it for first reading at a voting meeting, we, first of all, and I'll get this to Susan, but we're going to change pediculosis to head lice. I think we meant to do that, and it didn't, it didn't make it on to the final version here. Let's see, there's one other particularly important point. Okay, so when a student, a student who is found to have active head lice will be permitted to finish the school day, that's a part of this policy. The proposed policy says that before the student may return to class, the school nurse must confirm that no active lice remain. And following recommendations of, I don't know if this is explicitly set up by the CDC, but I believe it's consistent with what they recommend, and what we know about the efficacy of having a nurse check for lice. We're going to change that to, or I'm going to recommend that we change that to, before the student found to have active lice may return to class, the student, the school nurse must confirm with the student's parent that appropriate treatment has been completed. The idea being that once you go through the entire liceicide, pediculosicide treatment, that's usually a one-day process, and that should kill all the live lice. People reading the proposed policy will see that we are not going to have a no-nit policy. I'm going to recommend, the policy committee is going to recommend, that we not exclude students from school for nits. The policy goes through a number of other things that we'll be doing in terms of providing information to parents. I think we're going to be having a discussion with our school nurses about appropriate mechanisms for notification, whether such notification to other parents is necessary. I know, speaking for myself, I, you know, the National Association of School Nurses pretty unequivocally says that they do not recommend notification to other parents in a class where lice has been found. It's not effective, it's stigmatizing, et cetera, but I think it's a good idea to check in with the school nurses here in our district, see how they feel.
What's the argument for not, for it not applying to nits, but applying to lice? I mean, it's a matter of two or three days for them to actually hatch, right? So what's the...
I'm sorry, what was the last phrase that you said? I just couldn't hear.
Well, no, just why, why do students have to leave school for lice, but not for...
They don't have to lose...
Oh, let me clarify. I didn't make that clear. They would, they would stay through the day.
Right.
But then after school, the parent will be expected to make sure that the child was treated. And then, before they came back the next day, there would have to be at least some check-in with the parent or guardian to say, "Hey, did you start the lice treatment?" And if the parent or guardian said, "No, we didn't care to do that," then the student would be excluded if they had active lice. If the parent confirmed that, yes, we have begun treatment, we have done the treatment that was required, we have done the appropriate treatment, then the student would be permitted to return to school that morning. So the school would not, the student would not be missing time from class for active lice, so long as the parent could confirm that treatment had happened.
But that policy doesn't apply to nits, is that correct?
Correct, right.
Is there a reason why it doesn't apply to nits, but does apply to lice?
Whether nits are not, we're not requiring nits to be treated? I hadn't thought about that, actually. I mean...
Because, from my understanding, most, most treatments are never going to remove all nits. Like, nits aren't necessarily...
Ah, that's true.
Something that contains a live louse. I mean, the nits remain after lice come out, so most policies don't, don't contain, you know, anymore, these no-nit policies, because even after you've been, even after a child's been treated, they'll still be nits.
Right.
But they're not active, they're not alive. And very often, you have to do, I think, we tend not to do the medicines, just because I don't like that, we do combing. But I think a lot of the treatments, it is a two-cycle treatment. It's one, and then you do another one a week later, because those nits...
Right, to suffocate and then just get them out, yeah.
Right, so the ones that do hatch, you know, the ones that are still alive in their little houses, you know, once they, then you're getting rid of that second cycle, too. But as far as the nits that are left from ones that have already hatched, I mean, it's...
That's true, I've heard that, too, that, I mean, it's confusing, because the word "nit" is ambiguous. It applies both to the eggs and to, like, the shells that are left behind. Also, many of the eggs, if they're, like, attached farther than a quarter inch from your scalp, they're likely not going to hatch. They need to be, like, a certain proximity to your, the warmth of your skull. So, yeah, I guess the idea is, if they hatch into active lice, then the student must be treated. If they don't hatch, then no point in requiring treatment. And most of the treatment doesn't even attack the eggs, I believe.
Yeah.
Even the more, right, even the more dangerous nits are not...
And in terms of the policy, is there anything about trying to prevent the spread beyond just, like, the, like, I know that, and I don't know how much scientifically it comes from, like, sharing hats and, like, that kind of stuff? Like, is that, is that relevant? I wouldn't have done any research into this, I wouldn't know, but is that relevant? And if so, is there...
Yeah, it's relevant in the sense that lice do not have wings, and they don't jump around.
Right.
Which is great. So it's good for parents to know that, you know, that they typically spread by direct head-to-head contact, which, you know, you might see in, at Irving, maybe in the younger grades at Bardell.
I do it to my girls all the time. Just the other night, my girls had somebody over asleep for a sleepover, and the second she got there, they hugged and, like, went like this.
Right.
And when they do stuff like that, I'm like, right there, that's how it happens.
Right.
And they laugh at me, because I'm like, that, they just jump, see? They're, I mean, they don't...
They don't jump, but, you know, they could transfer.
But they do. I mean, younger kids, they hug, they put themselves all over each other, that's when it happens, you know?
I mean, it's, they say, the CDC says it's very rare to happen via a third mechanism, so via, no, head to headphones, headphones to other head. I mean, that can happen, but it's very rare. You know, and certainly, a school nurse, if she finds, he or she finds, active lice, might want to engage in a discussion with that student about not hugging anybody for the rest of the day. I think that would be a very appropriate thing for the nurse to do. And I certainly, you know, to, you know, it's up to individual teachers, I think, if they, let me, let me back up. The policy, at least the policy as I'm going to recommend, no, I think it's in the original policy, I have six different versions here, I'm sorry. We do anticipate requiring school nurses to come up with a protocol, an informational packet that would be shared with everyone, with parents from students at the affected schools, which would be really everything except the high school. High school, we don't see a big problem with lice. It's much more common in children ages three to 11, which would, you know, just get into the middle school. So there would be this information provided, first of all. Where was I going with that? I said, "Check where it's going." You had asked, what did you ask? You asked about...
No, just that I think it related to how people within the schools would be dealing with trying to prevent the spread, rather than just making sure that once it happens, you can deal with it.
Right, so teacher, that's right, what I was going to say. So, you know, hopefully, everybody will, like, take a look at this information packet, including our teachers, you know, check it out. And I'm sure, I mean, I'm sure that kindergarten, first grade, pre-k teachers already take some precautions to try to reduce the amount of head-to-head contact to the amount that they can. I mean, you know, that's certainly up to a teacher to try to...
And part of what's in the policy as well, and would be part of the conversation with the nurses, is a lot of this is going to be about, like, actual education.
Right.
I think there are so many misconceptions out there about lice and what they are and what they aren't, and how they spread, or how they don't, that doing away with a lot of that, and doing away with a lot of the stigma about that, so there's a lot even in the policy about that. This is not about hygiene, this is not about socioeconomics, this is not about anything. Anybody or anyone could get lice, and it has nothing to do with any of those things. And de-stigmatizing it, it can't be this, it doesn't make sense for it to be a class-wide notification to the whole class, because there are kids in my kid, there are other children in my kid's class that they're never going to touch or go anywhere near, so they're not going to give those kids lice. But if they hang out with, you know, A, B, and C kid, and have sleepovers and whatever, those are the kids that I need to notify. So encouraging parents that when your child has lice, what you need to do is contact everyone that your kid is coming into contact with. So it does shift some of it back to the parents, to educate the parents, to de-stigmatize it for the parents, and to say, "This is like a basic hygiene issue you need to take care of."
At the policy meeting, we talked about just that, that don't wait for somebody to tell you that there was lice in the classroom.
Exactly.
Routinely check your child.
Exactly. If your kid's going for a sleepover, check your kid. I mean, that's what I do with my girls now. You're going for a sleepover? Get over here. And just a quick, and I make sure there's nothing there, and then go on your merry way. Because I've learned the hard way of coming, a kid's coming home after a sleepover, and then like, "Mom!" And you're like, "Oh, dear." That's not fun. You know, so it's...
So that will be in the packet, probably, right?
Yes, yeah. The policy explicitly says, you know, unfortunately, the district considers it primarily the parent's responsibility to make this a part of ongoing hygiene. So it is a burden on parents, but that's the balance that we've decided to strike, and it's the balance that's recommended by the CDC, the American Academy of Pediatrics, and the National Association of School Nurses.
And the New Jersey...
And the New Jersey, yes, exactly.
It's pretty much widely-held, researched, you know, research-based recommendations that we're following.
Quick questions. This is not a mandatory policy, it's just a policy that we're looking at adopting. The second one is...
But it is something that now Strauss Esme has put out. Like, historically, I don't think Strauss Esme or New Jersey School Boards Association, New Jersey School Boards Association have even put out model policies on this. Now there is a model policy. So it's gone out to school districts across the state, where before, I think, school districts only had this as policy if they took it, you know, upon themselves.
Is there anything within this policy if you're, if the child is like a third grader, and they have a sibling who's a fourth grader, where the fourth grader is looked at?
No, there's nothing about that.
It's, it's the...
That would be the parent's responsibility, then.
It would be the parent's responsibility.
When the third grader comes home with a note, I mean, I think any semi-competent parent concerned about lice would be like, "Woo!"
Just to, just to throw Mark a curveball, is there anything that us as a district we could possibly do to provide more than just a pamphlet, such as the tools or a kit for those parents who don't have the funds or the wherewithal to go out and get it that afternoon?
Yeah, I would love to, and lots of districts have, like, actual kits of, you can get the lice comb, and then, and you can sign them out. Here you go, here's the, here's everything you need.
Well, sign it out and keep it.
Sign it out and keep it, really.
Each nurse...
No one wants that sucker back.
No, you can't. I mean, they just get sterilized. I mean, it's a metal, plastic...
Oh, oh, I thought you meant the...
We've blown dark combs many times in my house.
Yeah, 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 I'm sorry, I thought you meant the actual pesticide that goes on the head, and all that stuff.
Each nurse has ten.
If parents are going to treat, that's between them and their doctor.
Right.
The district can't even recommend treatment. I mean, that's, that's up to, you know, if a parent wants to contact their pediatrician and get a prescription or whatever...
Or go to Rite Aid, and...
Right, then that's, but, I mean, the district certainly can't mandate that people put chemicals on their kid's head.
Right, right.
Each nurse does have 10 kits.
Oh, okay.
Initially, we were thinking of having them to provide those who can't afford to buy a kit.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, we did this last year when several parents came to me with concerns.
That's pretty awesome.
That's great.
And so, it's, they're really intended for those folks who can't afford the kits. The kits are like $20 to $30. They're very expensive, so, so, yeah. I don't, I can't tell you how many we've distributed.
The jar of mayonnaise is only a couple bucks.
Doesn't work.
Does not work.
No, any of those, any of those...
Oh, no, I've had olive oil work well.
Any of those home remedies or...
I know, that's what they say.
Research does not bear that out.
We've all experienced it working, but maybe that's just because it wasn't that big an infestation. We always use that, the soap, I'm forgetting the name of it, but that, the very mild liquid soap, you know, where you put it on your head, and you blow dry your hair, and yada, yada, yada. But apparently, the evidence-controlled experiments do not show it works. That's just our luck, I guess.
I also thought I'd indicate that Dr. Brill, Susan Brill, is our district physician. She also happens to be the chief of adolescent medicine at St. Peter's.
I'm sorry.
Had a chance to look at our draft, latest draft, and she 100% endorses it.
That's great. I'd forgotten that you were going to have her look at it. That's wonderful to know.
I have a question, because I'm learning a lot about lice, as you all are talking about it.
So much.
Because growing up, I just felt like, as a black family, we didn't, we think lice didn't affect us. So I guess my question is, in the education packets that go home, I don't even know if I'm really correct in this, or is this just...
No, it's true.
So, right.
It does affect you, but it's less likely to affect you.
Less likely, just like skin cancer is less likely than that. So I just want to make sure there's a cultural component to whatever the education package is.
That's a good point. So maybe we can, yeah, maybe we can say it doesn't, you know, it affects certain ethnic groups, you know, more disproportionately, and others, you know, I'm not saying this very well. It's different with different hair types.
Textures, yeah.
Right, hair textures, right. But everybody should try to do it.
Yeah, but knowing that there are really, it is true, that there are differences, and you don't have to...
Yeah, there definitely are differences. Right, right. So I need, I think it's, yeah, people with, like, long, I don't know, I don't know how So I need, I think it's, yeah, people with, like, long, I don't know, I don't know how to describe it, non, more European-style hair are more at risk.
I love mine.
Like yours.
Unfortunately.
Do we have a sense of a sort of cutoff period from how many times a student can be denied coming back to school? You know, with the rise of superlice moving up from the southern states towards our wonderful state...
There are traveling superlice?
Well, our, yeah, no, there, yeah, CDC acknowledges that.
Many pesticide-resistant lice, which are becoming more prevalent.
We're not requiring the nurse to verify that there's no lice there, we're just requiring the parents to do the treatment.
Okay.
So if the treatment turns out not to be effective, oh, I suppose, then the child is scratching in class, gets referred to the nurse. No, the policy doesn't say, like, if the child has been referred to the nurse 18 times, at that point, I don't know, what will we do?
I'm just...
We're going to encourage the parent to continue treating that child. And I don't know, perhaps, do we have the discretion to, like, ask our school doctor for advice if we have a child with a case of extremely resistant lice? Like, just ask what we should do? Not, not that we should have the child be treated, but, I mean, is the doctor a resource we could tap into? Scott, where we defined a child who was repeatedly sent home with lice? Not sent home, I'm sorry, not sent home, but found to have lice, and...
Back up to your first part of the question, I did catch that.
Sorry. So Rob was asking about, is there a limit to the number of times somebody can be sent home with information that they have lice and they need to be treated?
Well, first of all, I, we know of no cases in which anybody this year has been actually sent home.
Yes.
For live lice.
And we're not going to be sending anybody home, either, just to be clear, but...
And I don't think it's even a question that we're not, it's not something that our nurses are comfortable doing.
Right.
So I think it's a, we've got a moot question.
Well, I guess Rob is, Rob actually asked it in a, I got your language wrong. You said, is there a limit to the number of times a student can be excluded from coming back in the morning?
Is there a number of times?
No.
I, no, I mean, bottom line is, it's not going to happen once, I can't imagine it would happen repetitively.
Well, I mean, there will be kids with lice that, no, no, Scott, so at the end of the day, at the end of the day...
The kids have lice, and they go at the end of the day to get back in. I think Rob's talking about the get-back-in point. If we have a parent that's repeatedly, just like, eh, not, not treating the kids, the kids chronically have lice, then what? That is a good thing to consider in terms of the policy.
Right.
Like, what, do you have a three-strikes rule, or, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I don't feel, I personally don't feel comfortable having any kind of hard rule.
Right.
Unless it's become such a, such a, I just, I don't have an answer to that question. I mean, I can't imagine it happening.
Yeah, and do we need to spell out everything, so if the parent repeatedly declines to do lice treatment? I don't know. Do we need to spell that out?
What's the possibility of some of the other, some of the other policies where we have these kinds of, we did this with, like, the, the kid doesn't have lunch money, and he's being contacted, and then it's referred to the social worker?
Okay, so maybe we could put in something about refer to a social worker?
Yeah, I mean, because then it seems like there's a family issue, right? I mean, if a child, I mean, this is like a child who's chronically ill. No, but it is. I mean, if a child is getting chronically ill and is not receiving treatment...
Yeah.
It's the same kind of issue. You'd want to have a social worker working with the family to say, "Hey, what's going on here?"
Yeah, I'm very hesitant to have a child who's not getting the parental support they need.
Yeah.
And having, you know, three days of no school, and looking like they might not be able to attend school.
Yeah, I don't see it any differently.
But I wouldn't want to exclude a child from school. I wouldn't want this child to be excluded from returning.
But we're saying, if the parents aren't agreeing to treatment, I mean, that's, that's what we're putting in the policy, that the child's not going to come back unless the parent has said yes.
We've done the treatment.
You know, we've either...
It's a low burden for the parent. The parent just has to say truthfully.
I mean, I'm concerned that we put our backs against the walls, on top of the fact that I don't know if I agree with it ethically. Let's say a parent is a contractions objector to using the, one of the more traditional means of...
We don't have to. Use the comb.
They have to do something, they have to do a comb.
You have to do something.
Oh, you know, maybe we should clarify that the treatment can include a thorough combing. Maybe we'll put something in the policy for that, Scott? I mean, because we, this policy does say that...
Well, if they would just say manually, yeah.
Manually, sorry, right, right.
Or medically or manually, or...
Medically, manually, okay. Because the policy right now does say that the child will be excluded if the parent refuses to confirm that they have done the treatment. So, I mean, if we're not comfortable with that, and I see your point, we need to, like, take a...
Well, why don't we flesh it out with the committee?
Okay.
Before second read? Because we have a number of items now to take, take care of.
I mean, to me, it's not even that if a kid's got 101 fever, I mean, you know, I mean...
Well, that's a life threat, that could be a life-threatening issue, as opposed to a nuisance issue. Yeah.
Right. I mean, I think we could add something in here about how if the parent, you know, repeatedly refuses to engage in any kind of treatment at all, then, you know, a social worker will be contacted, and the student will be allowed to attend school while the situation is resolved, something like that.
I found Dr. Brill to be a great resource, so we could always reach out to her. She's a great emailer, could email questions we have.
Great.
Going into our second read.
And this will be a good question for the nurse, the nurses, too, if the nurses have encountered situations like this, where kids are, you know, chronically being referred and...
What then?
Okay, cool.
I find that most parents tend to want to act on this issue.
Yes. If the parent is aware at all and present.
Or it becomes a whole family, like I said.
Yeah.
Right.
Comes a family event. Okay, does anybody have any other questions for, for Ann on policy? Okay, what, do you have any updates for us on anything equity and excellence-related?
We will be meeting this Thursday afternoon.
Awesome.
We'll have an update after that.
All righty. So we'll hear from you at the next meeting. Public comment, we have no public, so I think we can move straight on past that. So for my president's report, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the discussion that we're actively planning for April 24th, which will be next Tuesday. Our tentative title for the, the meeting, although we haven't really, I don't know that we've 100% committed to it, is "Increasing Security While Moving Forward to Implement Restorative Practices." As anybody on the board, or anybody who's been watching the board meetings for the last couple of months knows, a couple of months ago, we had teachers come out, or I guess it was last month, we had teachers come out to the meeting, following an incident in the, actually, in a hallway between the middle school and the high school. And teachers shared their concerns with the administration, with the board, related to security issues in both the middle school and the high school. And some measures have already been put in place in the high school, in terms of, the teachers are spending more time monitoring the hallways, which I think they're finding somewhat effective. I don't know, from the student perspective, if you notice any difference, or...
I can't say whether I noticed any difference. I will say that I haven't seen any reason to believe that the teacher monitoring is necessarily effective. Like, I haven't been stopped by any teacher monitor and asked for a pass, even when I have one, you know, or, so, like, I've never seen them change the conduct in the halls, but it's possible that there's stuff happening that I'm not seeing. Mr. Lassiter obviously would be a better resource to know.
Yeah, same. Okay. And one of the, one of the requests from the teachers in, so Scott and I met with teachers on a couple of occasions, one at a safety committee meeting, which was kind of about this incident, and also issues then secondary to Parkland. So, you know, all of this kind of came to a head all at once. So there was, you know, a fair amount of anxiety and concern among the staff that, you know, obviously, we felt really needed to be addressed directly. And then also, in a private meeting with a group of teachers that were involved, and Dr. Taylor and myself. So both the teachers, and with, I believe, with backing of the union, there was kind of some, some changes that they wanted to see. Some of them is, is part of what Mark spoke to earlier, grant funding, or not grant funding, I'm sorry. Thank you, yes. Financing, a financing option we're looking at to, to, to solidify, I want to say, the cameras that we have throughout the, throughout the district, both internal and external. And to do some work in the vestibules, at Bardell, and at the high school. And one of the requests from the teachers, particularly at the high school, was to have some other sort of presence in the hallway other than themselves, other than teachers acting as hall monitors. So there was a lot of discussion about, well, what would that look like? What would that position be? And so, those of us who are on the board, or who have kind of been paying attention to board issues for the last few years, know that a, just, what was it, two years ago now, I guess, or a little over two years ago, Officer Joe Curbelo just kind of appeared in the district one day. And we don't want that to happen with this kind of a position. And I think the pushback to Officer Joe being in the building was for, for good reason, and there are very, you know, sincerely-held and serious concerns about having a, a police presence in the building, and we don't want to turn our buildings into a place where there is a constant police or security presence. We want this to be a place where our students feel safe, but we also want it to be a place where our students feel comfortable and welcome, and not like they're being, what's the word I'm looking here for? Surveiled, for, you know, lack of a better word. So if, we want to honor the students and the, the teachers' need for safety and security, but we also want to, you know, honor our students' need to be, you know, kids who are able to make mistakes and not have that end them up, you know, across from Bardell at the police station. So, so this is a really important conversation that includes our students, it includes our teachers, it includes the community, so we want to have that conversation. We want to talk about what this position should look like, and what this position should be. So we came up with the idea of having this discussion, so this doesn't end up like a situation like Officer Joe, where, you know, you guys just walk in one day, and there's somebody walking around the hallways, and you're like, "Well, who's that?" You know, we want to, we want to flesh out who that's going to be. So we hope that students will come out. If you guys could help us spread the word, I think Dr. Taylor is going to have more information about it, hopefully, before, by tomorrow, I think, was the, the goal, to get, get the word out, you know, via Genesis, Honeywell, you know, whatever alert systems we have, whatever help you guys can give us, spreading it through student council and your channels. We would appreciate...
What's the date, Darcy?
The 24th, next Tuesday, so it'll be 6:30 in the high school cafeteria. We're working closely with Keith to set this up. We're hoping that Keith can help us with some, some perks that will help entice folks to come out. We'll have babysitting provided by the National Honor Society students, so that it's not a burden for parents to come out. If they have small children at home, they can bring their kids and have their, have their kids watched. We're talking with Keith. Keith offered a, an idea for a format for the meeting, which is a format called open space, where everybody would...
Open space?
Yeah, where everybody would come in, we would kind of talk about what the, what the issues are, and some of the things that we think we need to work through, and then folks would divide up into groups to discuss those, those particular issues, and you can divide, you know, decide where you want to go, based on what your particular interests or concerns are.
My oldest friend is a pioneer in, in open space, and she's run open space meetings along with, with Norm, with my wife, and it's a fantastic venue. And my first board 30 years ago did an open space.
Oh, cool.
In really trying to turn the district around with principals, and administrators, and teachers, and board members, and a, in a weekend retreat away, away from the schools. So it's a fantastic venue.
Yeah, I think it'll be a good way for people to get their voices heard. You're not just sitting in an audience, listening to people talk to you, raising your hands, hoping somebody calls on you, or you get to write your question. Nothing I hate more than write your question on a note card. You know, like, this isn't, you know, this isn't a, a way to address this issue. I think everybody needs to sit down and have a conversation about this. So, so those are our plans right now. Everybody should hear more about it from Dr. Taylor in the next day or two, for sure. And, yeah.
I have a question for Olivia and Julia. What is the best way for me to get the word out to, besides through you guys, to the high school student body in particular?
I don't actually think that it is necessarily through Liv and I. I think that a lot of people who would have the best insight could be identified by teachers and the administration.
Okay.
And then reached out to specifically.